I now call the May 5, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilwoman Borders lead us in the pledge allegiance and would Councilmember Bailey give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your dearest heavenly father, thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Thank you for the ability to live here in this wonderful city. Please bless us in all that we do here today, that we may make good decisions for the city of Riverton and its citizens. Please bless all of the first responders, doctors and nurses that are helping during this time of crisis in our nation. May you keep them safe and help them to heal the people that they have to deal with. We ask this in all, in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thanks Carla and Mike, appreciate it. Would the city clerk please conduct roll call?
Yes, your honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. The chair would entertain a motion to excuse Corey Rota from tonight's meeting. Councilwoman Schatz has the motion and Councilwoman Borders has the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. I declare quorum as present. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Council discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on any, on other items would like to speak now. I ask those individuals who would wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, we will proceed. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda item by title only?
Yes, your honor, approval of the minutes, April 21, 2020 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the minutes, May 5, 2020 Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for May 5, 2020. And a replat number one of the Big Sky Edition Number Two Edition. Petitioners Tyler and Courtney Cassidy.
Thank you. Is there any items requiring further discussion?
Your honor, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening and we approved consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $575,641.05. Payroll and liabilities in the amount of $429,354.81. For a total of $1,4,995.86.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilwoman Bailey. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Every once in a while, we get an opportunity to recognize somebody that's gone out of their way to, to offer service to the citizens of Riverton. We're fortunate tonight to have John Payne, who is the one that would brought this to my attention. I appreciate John's interest in that and what happened was John lost his wallet. And that isn't so uncommon, all of us have had that feeling. But what was really nice was some good citizen returned it to the police department intact. And better than that, one of our officers, after trying to reach John, took the opportunity to drive right to John and return it to him. And so John would like to express his appreciation and I would like to express my appreciation to Kingston Cole. Kingston, are you with us tonight? Would you come up to the, to the podium and John, you also, and I'll meet you there. This is a certification of appreciation for Kingston Cole to acknowledge and to thank you for your daily efforts. You're dedicated and, and your dedication and integrity, your willingness to go the extra mile and your optimism, which contributes to the success of the city of Riverton. And we really are proud to have you on our force, Kingston. You know, police officers don't have to do those kind of things and yet we have a whole forceful of police officers that go out of their way to, to give service and we really do appreciate you and want you to know that. So thanks guys for coming. John, I appreciate you for doing that too and bringing that to my attention. So thanks a bunch, I do appreciate it. If anybody else out there in TV land or staff or anybody else that comes across a, an act of kindness or something that's above and beyond their, our city employee's duty, we, we see it every day. I went down to the sewer plant and got a wonderful tour and we just have great staff that works for the city. And so I appreciate that. We now move to item 10, which is a consideration of ordinance numbered 20-001. Third reading and, and final reading. Would the city clerk please read ordinance numbered 20-001 by title only?
Yes, your honor. Proposed ordinance number 20-001 on third and final reading. An ordinance amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.12 Additional Traffic Regulations to revise Section 10.12.060 Exhibition of Speed and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 20-001 on third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Schatz has the motion and Council, Councilwoman Bailey has the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the city clerk please conduct roll call vote?
Yes, your honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Yes.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Aye.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Aye.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Aye.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Aye. Motion passes. Tower lease agreement amendment, Union Wireless Community Development Director's report, please.
Your honor, Union Wireless leases approximately .15 acres of land from the city of Riverton on the ridge line just south of the Wind River Job Corps. The location houses telecommunications equipment and two towers approximately 42 feet tall. The lessie did not feel the existing lease agreement adequately addressed future improvements or alterations to the existing equipment and proposed amendment number one to the lease agreement, which is before you this evening for your consideration. At this time, staff recommends approval of amendment number one to the Griffey Hills Communications Lease Agreement. I stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the addendum to the tower lease agreement for Union Wireless.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Bailey. And a second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item 12 is a bid award, Sunset Drive Public Works Direct, Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, your honor. Sunset Drive was one of the projects prioritized by the 1% Committee for Construction this season. I'm happy to report that this project was designed in-house and a lot of credit is owed to Brendan Toman, our city engineer, and Bob Sprague, our engineering technician and also Monte Nordwick. These individuals were able to save considerable amount of money so that funds could go directly to roads out of the 1% Committee, or 1% account, I should say. East Sunset Drive is one of the highest trafficked and visible streets in the city. The roadway is experiencing severe subgrade and pavement failure. It also has significant concrete issues. It is for these reasons that the committee highly prioritized this section of road. The design for this project also includes the replacement of over 40-year-old ductile iron waterline pipe with PVC pipe. This will allow for the improvements on the surface to get longer and better use without us having to dig it up in the near future to replace this old water pipe. Bids for this project were advertised and publicly opened April 30. We did that over YouTube and we had the following results. 71 Construction submitted a bid in the amount of $832,155. McCarty Excavation out of Colorado submitted a bid in the amount of $827,980. Alexander Excavation submitted a bid in the amount of $869,980. And Dave's Asphalt submitted a bid in the amount of $927,080. Because McCarty Excavation is not a Wyoming resident, by state statute, 5% was added to their bid and therefore they were put at $869,335.95. Staff reviewed each bid to assure that they were responsive to bid specification and staff recommends that the city council award the East Sunset Drive Improvement Project to 71 Construction in the amount of $832,155. There is currently enough funds in cash on hand right now for this project. After, excuse me, if this bid is awarded, there will be a little over $558,000 in the account as it stands right now, which will accrue month over month. Staff stands for any questions if you have any.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to award the East Sunset Drive Improvement Project to 71 Construction Inc. in the amount of $832,155.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion and Councilwoman Bailey has the second. Discussion?
Your honor.
Please.
Um. I'm wondering, since that is the highest, one of the highest roads traveled, did we beef up the, the depths and the design criteria of that? Or did we just going to replace it as is?
Your honor, councilman, the design does take into account the high traffic and also the, the school traffic that is there, so the, the buses that go regularly. Mr. Toman actually utilized the services of a, of an asphalt consultant when going through the design to ensure that the sub base and the asphalt would be sufficient moving forward.
Kyle, this also addresses Maple, does it not, the waterline on Maple?
Your honor, that is correct.
That's right. And so we've had the number of breaks on Maple. Any count on how many breaks?
Your honor, we've had a handful. I know in the last just few years, we've had at least three, but going back since it was overlaid in 2014, I'm sure we've had several more where we've had to cut that road.
So this, this is a real money saver in my estimation and I really do appreciate the, the effort made to, to get it out to bid and, and into the local contractor's hand. And I, I think that's what the 1% does so effectively. And once again, we're, we're putting $832,000 in a local company's pocket and, and that will generate a lot of work in Riverton. So I do appreciate that.
One more.
Kyle?
Um, Kyle, what, where does the feed for that Aspen come off? Is that coming off of 16th or does that feed off of Sunset? The water itself or is it in a circle?
Your honor, it actually loops to both locations. So it does feed from 16th and Sunset or Maple.
So when you, when we cut that, how long are those individuals going to be out of service?
Your honor, we'd have to work with the contractor on that, but we will do it as fast as possible and plan the outage so that we have minimal interruption.
We're going to replace that entire on Maple from cast to PVC?
Your honor, that is correct.
Oyippee.
And actually the out of service would only be affected on Maple, I do believe.
Yeah.
So no one else should be affected.
Your honor, we will have a few affected on Sunset and also Forest because we are replacing old sections of waterline there as well. But contractors are very good at getting people back into service in a very timely manner.
Yep. Appreciate that. Anybody else have a question? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Item 13 is a Senior Center Solar Upgrade Contract, Community Development Director's Report, please.
Thank you, your honor. The Riverton Senior Center is interested in installing a rooftop solar panel array to offset costs associated with electrical service. They began discussions in the fall of last year, however, a couple of factors delayed the project. The first was, at the time, there were no available funds from the Blue Sky Grant Award Program through Rocky Mountain Power. This grant program has a cost share of 60% of the total project cost, which in this case, the total project cost is $59,908. So the grant will account for $35,944 of that. Secondly, because the city owns the property the campus resides on and the project was over $30,000, it technically needed to be advertised for selection. Earlier this spring, grant funding became available and so we advertised the project for selection. One qualified applicant submitted a statement of qualifications, which was Creative Energies out of Landor, Wyoming. Since only one submission had been made, staff believed it would save time to move directly to the contract phase of the project and select that with the draft of a contract before you this evening. Subsequent to this week's packet being published, the question of whether bonding would be required on the project came up. And so we did a little bit of research and according to Wyoming State Statute 16-6-112, projects in excess of $50,000 require some type of surety acceptable to the governing body. After discussion with legal counsel, it was recommended that an irrevocable letter of credit from the, from Creative Energies Bank would suffice as surety for the project, especially with as little risk to the city as there is with this particular project. So at this time, oh, which created the need for the hard copy of Exhibit B that's in front of you tonight. That simply denotes that as a requirement for surety on the project, we will require a letter of credit. I have spoken to Creative Energies, they've spoken to their bank. It's going to not be a problem to get that issued at very little if any cost to them. So at this time, staff recommends approval of the contract and Exhibit B to form and providing signatory authority to the Community Development Director contingent upon confirmation of local donor matching funds for the project to cover the remaining balance of the project cost exceeding the grant funds. That amount is $23,963. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you. The, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the design build agreement between the city of Riverton and Creative Energies LLC and give signatory authority to the Community Development Director.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion by Councilwoman Bailey and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? Mike?
Your, your honor, it would be our recommendation to make that contingent upon the matching funds being, upon the matching funds of 23,000 being provided as the Community Development Director stated.
Do, do you want that added?
I would amend my motion to that.
Yes.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So do we need to restate that, or we all right?
No, I believe we're okay now, Your Honor.
Okay.
I have a question. Okay. So this, the city is going to spend $0 on this project, correct?
That is absolutely correct, Your Honor, yes.
And then, just from my own knowledge, do we have a number on the electrical bill savings that this would create by installing this solar panel project?
Yes, but it might take me just a minute to look that up. I apologize.
I have had that conversation, and I was terribly surprised at the utility bills on that building. They do have a commercial kitchen in place, and so the utility bills are extremely high. And so this will not replace the entire cost, but it will supplement the building substantially. I think it's a really good move, especially since we're not delving into the endowment or city funds to do it, so. Yes?
When you find those figures, I think it'd be an excellent opportunity for the City of Riverton, since it's not out of our dollar, that we can use the information for us, see if that helps anything else. Electricity is not going to go down like natural gas.
Well, and we never would have thought natural gas would go down either if you're a natural gas producer, but you're right. And I, I have some experience with solar, and it is, that was a nice way to say this.
Is there a warranty on that?
Well, I, I would assume there is some mechanical warranty that, that comes with that equipment. It usually does, and, and it is fairly technical equipment, and, and batteries wear out, batteries are extremely costly. I don't know how many batteries are in this bank, but I know 12 batteries is about $3,500, and so that can, that can have, if cared for correctly, it would probably have a 15, 20-year life, and so I think that the, I think the project is really smart to see and to help surplant the costs of that, that electrical, so. I think everybody involved has, has looked at the figures and seen it to be a plus, so.
Your Honor?
Yes.
This system, as advertised in the request for qualifications, was 25-kilowatt DC capacity, producing at a minimum of 34,000 kilowatt-hours annually. It should be about a 10% to 15% reduction in, in electrical usage, so.
Mia?
We knew we could count.
Oh, hey.
Your Honor, at one point, the city did pay the electric bill for that property at 303 East Lincoln, and at that time, back in 2016 through 2018, we were paying an average of $1,500 to $2,400 per month.
Staggering.
So 10% of that, give or take?
And that would be a minimum, Your Honor.
So, I, I realize it's not going to replace the entire electrical bill, but we do live in a really wonderful place for solar collection. We have 300-plus days a year of sunshine, so, good idea. Any other discussion? Tim, you have any questions?
Nope. I've kind of known that this was coming. We've talked about it since I was on the Finance Committee earlier, so I feel pretty comfortable with it.
Super. Everybody else okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Tim, did you say aye?
I, I think I hit mute accidentally right when I said aye, but yes, I said aye.
Okay, super, thank you. Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. SkyWest lease agreement, the fee deferment, Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. City Council approved a lease agreement with SkyWest Airlines on December 17th, 2019. This agreement allowed for SkyWest to utilize both terminal space and airfield space at Riverton Regional Airport. To be more specific, it allowed for about 168 square feet of ticket counter area, 290 square feet of office area, 740 square feet of baggage makeup area, 772 square feet of baggage claim area, and 1,470 feet of gate holding area. It also required the payment of landing fees by the commercial air carrier. On April 17th, 2020, SkyWest requested landing fee and rent deferment for 90 days, and the letter they provided is attached in your packet. This is in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and its adverse impact on the transportation industry. Because we receive grant monies very similar to your discussion about the fee waiver requests that you've already considered, we are required to follow guidelines of the FAA when doing a deferment. The guidelines that we have currently are attached in your packet as well. In brief, it explains that the decision to defer fees and rents is a local decision, but it has to be applied fairly and similarly to businesses of the same type and kind. It further states that if a deferral exceeds an annual reporting period, and for us, that's the fiscal year, interest should be charged based on the treasury note interest rates beginning the date of the deferral and reported on FAA Form 127. The city, I think, has a good partner here in SkyWest, in that they are only asking for a deferral and not an abatement. They do plan on paying back these rents, and I appreciate the fact that they have stepped up to do so. When it comes to a budget impact, the approved lease agreement with SkyWest is generating variable levels of revenue, and that's because the gate holding area and the landing fee, fees, really have to do with frequency, so the number of passengers that come through and the number of landings that occur at the airfield. The square footage rent fees are a little bit more fixed. When deferring these rents, we really do not take on any type of impact on our budget, except for the fact that for the last quarter of fiscal year 20, we will not receive the revenues as had planned, but will receive them before December of 2020. Staff therefore recommend city council defer the landing fee and rent fees as requested by SkyWest, and we do recommend that in your motion, you just simply read what's in your packet, because it is a lengthy motion. And the reason being is because we include that treasury note interest rate requirement, which is 0.15% per month. And what we're saying is, we recommend you defer the landing fee and rent fees and apply that 0.15% as required by the FAA up to December 31st, 2020, or until the deferred amount is paid in full, whichever occurs first. And should the deferred amount not be paid in full by December 31st, 2020, any remaining balance shall be subject to the delinquent rate that is in their lease agreement, which is 1.5% per month. Staff recommends that you approve this request from SkyWest, and we stand for any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the SkyWest Airlines' request to defer monthly rent and landing fees as reported, and to require full repayment by December 31st, 2020. Do we need further clarification?
Your Honor, I apologize. I, I think we had a pretty good scripted agenda there, and I, I didn't mean to confuse it. It would help if in the motion, we included, I think, the interest rate.
Okay. And is that the 1.5 interest?
It is 0.15 up to December 31st, 2020, and thereafter, it would be 1.5%.
So anybody want to take a stab?
I'll go.
Okay.
Okay. So I would move that we defer for SkyWest Airlines to defer the monthly rent from May 2020 to July 2020, and landing fees from April 2020 to June 2020, and require the repayment in full by December 31st of 2020. Beginning July 1 of 2020, said deferred rent and fees will accrue interest at the rate of 0.15% per month through December 31st, 2020, and if they are not paid by that time, defer back to the delinquent rate of 1.5% per month pursuant to their agreement.
So moved. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Bailey. And second is Councilman Larson. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Kyle?
With the change of schedule, is this going to affect the parking their jets overnight?
Your Honor, no, it will not.
Have they, Kyle, have they asked or talked about a hangar or anything of that nature to protect that lane?
Your Honor, no, they have not requested a hangar.
I could just see that bill. Mia? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All, any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Admiral Beverage Lease Agreement Amendment, Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item is really reconsidering an item that came before you about a month ago. This is a standard lease agreement for vending machines at Riverton Regional Airport on, well, I don't remember the date, but it was about a month ago. I think it was April 5th. 7th, thank you, April 7th. I was close. On April 7th, you approved and considered a lease, a standard lease agreement for vending machines that basically included a base term with the possibility of multiple renewals, an annual rent of $18 a square foot for the footprint of the machine itself, and then a monthly concession fee of 10%. After the city council took action on the standard lease agreement form, Admiral, excuse me, Admiral Beverage contacted city staff and made a request that the lease fees be reconsidered. They did have a chance to review the lease agreement before the city council considered it, but unfortunately, it wasn't until after it was approved that they realized that the rent and concession fee made the placement of vending machines unprofitable for them at the airport. As you'll read in your packet, I was able to break down how much each vending machine generates and the profit associated therewith, and with both the 10% concession fee and the square foot rent requirement, it made a vending machine on an annual basis only about $40 profitable. So there's not a very big margin there. And so city staff appreciated the fact that this was brought up by Admiral Beverage, and we asked city council to reconsider this standard lease agreement for vending machines with this new amendment removing the square foot annual rent requirement, but keeping everything else in the agreement, which is basically a 10% concession fee for consideration of the lease agreement. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes. I'll wait for the motion for discussion, sorry.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the amendment, the amended lease agreement for the vending machine concessions at the Riverton Regional Airport.
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Schatza. Further discussion? Councilman Bailey?
Your Honor, for Kyle, you'd sort of previously stated a few times that we have to keep the rents consistent among the other leases at the airport, so does this mean if the food hub people want to come to us, they can say, well, we don't want to pay per square foot either because we can't make a profit? And then we're going to be saying, well, we have to go to just 10% concession, just like we did for, for the pop machine folks? I guess, to me, that doesn't seem fair, and so I, I guess, I think we ought to discuss that a little more.
Your Honor.
Please.
So, so because the numbers are down, blah, 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 does this mean we get a second bite at the apple when the numbers go up? Do we get to go back to them and say, now you're making more money, and we want a better concession deal?
Your Honor, based on the lease terms, before the renewal period kicks in, it has to be on terms agreeable to both parties. So if you did want to renegotiate at that time, I believe you would have that right. And to answer Councilman Bailey's question, we do have a requirement to be consistent in the application of fees at the terminal to similar types of entities. That's why I preferred to have this lease agreement as a standard lease agreement for all vending machines. Therefore, if someone's selling pop or candy bars, or whatever it might be, if it's a vending machine, they all comply with the same rules. Whether or not the local food hub would fall within that same type of category, I think is worthy of your discussion. I think arguments could be made both ways as to whether or not they're a similar type of business as a vending machine or something different, but Councilman, you are correct in that we do have to be fair and equitable in the application of our lease fees.
Because to me, I, I don't think that, well, I guess, Your Honor, sorry. I guess to me, if the food hub folks want to sell a can of soda and the vending machine wants to sell a can of soda, they all, both ought to be on even footing, and realistically, the food hub folks would have paid, be paying a lot more rent because they have a ton more square footage than the pop machine ever will, and, and so it puts the person physically there providing more service at the airport at a disadvantage to the pop machine, is the way I look at it, so. And, and I think there's room for both because they're not all open all the time and all that, but I think.
Well, I think if you go to any other, anybody else have any, any questions? I think if you go to any other airport, you're always shocked at what a pop costs when you get past security, and, and yet, what we're trying to do here makes sense to me and keep the lease where it actually makes the provider willing to provide the service. And so if we get the price of, of the pop or candy bars or whatever they're dispensing so high that no one ever buys one, we've defeated the purpose. And once you get past security in a larger airport, it's more like jail. If you're hungry, you pay the price. If you're not, you don't, and so I think that, I don't think we have the same leverage. We're not, we're not quite in the same category, and so I would, I would appreciate the fact that Admiral, Admiral needs to make a profit. I think Kyle's point is if they were to sell six cases of beverages a day compared to a six-pack a day right now, when we, we have low volume, that would also help to make up the difference. The square footage, I don't think, is comparable to, say, a restaurateur that's going to need hundreds of square feet compared to 18 square feet. There isn't anybody that can really put a business together in 18 square feet unless you're a vending machine. And so I think this holds, we could hold that this lease would, would need to be equal to anyone else that was bringing vending machines in, but not necessarily equal to other leasers that need square footage. Does that make sense?
No, I, I get both sides.
So I think that, I think that we need, I honestly do believe that we need to, there's a lot, there's a long space between flights, and we would be wise to have some type of, of food available for people that need to sit and wait for, for connections and people to pick them up. And so I think to make our airport is, is conducive to the public, I think these vending machines are about our only avenue. We've tried the food hub, and it's been very costly to, not necessarily the city, but to the poor guys that are trying to run the food hub. And so that would be my, I would, I would suggest that we accept this and let the vending machine do its part until maybe we get a better option.
Your Honor?
Please.
I, I guess I just have a, a thought, you know, with the food hub trying to get started, we had agreed to a certain amount of time that they could have their rent deferred. Also with COVID-19 and everything, we've agreed to things being deferred or, or pushed off. Also with COVID-19 and everything, we've agreed to things being deferred or, or pushed off. You know, I understand the point that Admiral Beverage is making here with the, you know, they've, they've got to pay for a vending machine and then the vending machine's going to be there. So some of that's part of the overhead that they have. I guess my preference would be to keep the lease as we had it originally, but maybe allow them a deferral for the first year or something. That's just my thought because I understand what Mr. Bailey is saying. You know, if we're going to sit here and, yeah, I think we start building ourselves up to making exceptions for everything all the time. So I, I guess that would just be my thought. I don't know what anybody else on the council thinks of it, but that just seems like that'd be the cleaner way to go, keep the lease agreement as we had it originally, based on the square footage. Because I think the point is well made. We want to be uniform in how we're doing that.
I, I think that has merit. You know, the hardest thing we've had to do is find a, somebody that is willing to run the restaurant up there. And for those of us that would like the restaurant to, to become active again, when we, when we get to that point, I'm sure we'll have comments made that, you know, if you get rid of these vending machines, people would use the restaurant more. And they would have to buy their, their things that they wanted to eat, their drinks and, and beverages through the concessionaire that was there. So, yeah, this, this has maybe some longer lasting conversation than, than what we think. But I think for right now, maybe, maybe the deferment is, is a good idea. I, I don't know. Kyle, what, what do you think?
Your Honor, along those lines, maybe another option is that you could simply approve the lease as it stands right now for a year period and then reexamine it. And I think that would be a little cleaner than trying to calculate an abatement, not calculate, but approve an abatement or a deferment. If it's a deferral, they would have to pay back whatever they're not paying as approved by you in the lease. If it's an abatement, it's still something that's required of them, but you're just saying you don't have to do it for a certain amount of time. And if that's the strategy, then you could simply go with the first period of this lease as it stands with only the concession fee and then reconsider whether or not you'd like to put in the, the square foot component before a renewal of this lease.
Well, and my contention with trying to hold the two is that even if you put a deferral on there, the cost of, of doing business at $40 a year is ridiculous and we won't find anybody to, to put machines in. You know, it has to, it has to have the hope of making some money or no one's going to do it. And so I, I like the lease as it stands and then I, I don't mind the problems that it brings because it's such a limited square footage that, is it 18 square feet for the, for the vending machines?
Your Honor, be.
How many square feet is it?
Three by three.
Three by three.
Yeah, so nine square feet. But they have two locations, one for the secure area and one for the lobby. The lobby vending machine has been there for years and we're trying to clean up our record by having an official lease in place. They've been paying a concession fee. And the vending machine that has been in the secure area has only been there for a couple of months now.
And the reason we have to have that is once you clear security, you can't come back out to get a drink, even if you have a long wait for that or you have to take your shoes off and clear security again. So I would, my suggestion would be to pass it as presented to council with the fact that we would maybe need to readdress it. But the square footage is so small that we can't have any, there's going to be very other, very few vendors, including Hertz or anybody else that's trying to run a business. They can't operate in a three by three space.
Right.
Unless, now, maybe that's coming where you can actually rent a car through a.
Through a kiosk.
Through a kiosk, yeah. You know, I could be wrong about that, but that's a pretty tight footprint.
That'd be pretty skinny.
Yeah.
And Your Honor, maybe this is helpful for your discussion. Just as a reminder, the local food hub has two leases right now with the city. The first is for the cafe itself, which is a flat fee. It's not based on square footage, it's not based on concession. It is just the flat fee consistent with what, with what we have charged other operators of the cafe. And then their second lease is when they branched out into the secure area and that lease is a square foot and a concession consideration.
So it would be my suggestion to follow staff's recommendation and to pass this project. Any other discussion? The motions still hold? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Quarterly Fiscal Health Report, Finance Director's Report, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
March 31st has come and gone already. It's hard to believe that we're already three quarters of the way through our fiscal year. I just have some updates on how our budget has been performing based on our projections. As a reminder, the council did approve a budget of $25,548,000. And I'll go through each one of these slides from the general fund and then each of the enterprise funds to let you know where we're at. So for, for those that are listening and, and aren't familiar with this reporting, the general fund is our primary operating account and it's used for revenues and expenditures of most of the tax-supported activities of the city. It does make up 44% of our overall budget. And the council did approve a budget of $11,359,000 for the general fund this year. The amounts referenced on the slides presented include both operational and capital revenues and expenditures, as well as any budget transfers. Each one of you should have a copy of this slideshow in your packet as well, so you can read through these with me. So at the close of the quarter, in the general fund, the expenditures did exceed revenues by $508,549, which sounds really fantastic. Sounds like we did a really good job in estimating, almost that we underestimated our expenditures or overestimated our revenues, but that's not quite the case. The $508,000 difference is mainly attributed to our supplemental funding that we receive for capital projects and one-time expenditures. And the city staff budgeted $1,030,000 in expenditures. And while we have received the funding, we have not fully expended all of it out yet. So that's where you see that large variance. We've expended $531,000 and we have a balance of $499,000 in supplemental funding that we have yet to expend this year. Part of that supplemental funding expenditure was a transfer to supplement the airport. So we did budget $268,219 for that. So actually, if we take out those expenditures, we are at, I'm trying to read small print here. We've got an airport transfer that's less than the $268,000 right now. So we've got about $375,000 that we're over. So the next slide that I have then is the actual airport fund. So you can see the revenues and expenditures there. The airport fund is actually performing quite well right now. So I'm, I'm very sad to hear that COVID has taken place and it's really hit our transportation industry because our airport is looking the best that it has in a number of years. Right now, again, we budgeted a $268,000 transfer from the general fund to support airport operations. And really, right now, they're only down about $133,000. So the airport fund is looking really good right now. I'm guessing that we will probably see that move, trend move a little bit in the next quarter with the airlines not moving like they have. But hopefully, with any luck at all, then we will still end up within about that $268,000 supplemental projection that we had. So we also budgeted $160,000 from PFC revenues to help support the airport fund this year. And I don't think that we're going to need to use that. So we may be able to hold off on that for future capital projects. Any questions at all regarding the general fund and the airport fund? Okay. I'm going to move back to the water fund now. The total budget for the water fund is $4139,000. Year-to-date, our expenditures are exceeding our revenues by $184,693. And city staff did budget a transfer of $24,156 from cash to support capital projects. And as many members of our community know, the city council did approve rate increases for our enterprise funds, which is water, sewer, and sanitation. So right now, we're within $184,000 of our projections. Hopefully, we may see a little bit more of an upward swing in those as we move further through the last quarter of the fiscal year. However, it probably will not be significant. With any luck at all, we'll have a little bit of cash left over that we'll be able to carry over into next year's budget and we do plan to do that to help offset the costs associated with our Riverton Water Supply Project. And you'll learn more about that as we walk you through the budget process within the next couple of months. I'm moving on to the wastewater fund. The total, total budget for the wastewater fund is $2553,618. And our revenues are exceeding our expenditures by a mere $48,679. So we budgeted very closely in our wastewater fund. We did budget a transfer of $19,991 from cash for capital projects. And as we are moving through the fiscal year, we will be expanding a little bit more of our funding for, for those projects. And then the last fund that we have in the, in the enterprise funds is the sanitation fund. The sanitation fund is our healthiest fund and we did budget a total of $2486,515 for the sanitation fund. And at the quarter end, our revenues outpaced our expenditures by only $28,925. But it's important for our public to know that we did purchase a new sanitation truck this year and it has been paid for and it's now operational. And we did expend $297,000 just out of cash that we were holding to help fund that. So after our $297,000, we still have $28,000 to the good left in that fund. And we have air service. So the air service fund is primarily funded by the city of Riverton, Fremont County, the city of Lander, and then we also receive some smaller revenues from other entities. And then we also receive reimbursements from the state of Wyoming through the ASAP program. It's the Air Service Enhancement Program. And at the close of the third quarter, the air service fund had a positive balance of $492,987. Now, the high balance is attributed to the community contributions that we received at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then we did switch our air service provider from Denver Air Connection to United Air. And so the billing has changed on that. Instead of the air service provider billing us directly and then us paying them in advance, or paying them and then receiving reimbursements from the state for the funding, all of the billing is going directly to the state. And now we're experiencing kind of a reverse effect where the state's paying for it and then they're billing the city for our portion of that. And we pay 40% out of the amount that's billed from United Air Service and that covers flights for, between Riverton and Sheridan. And now I don't know where Rock Springs, are they going to be involved in that billing also? Or is it just, yeah. So we did receive our first, our preliminary bill from YDOT and our numbers indicate that the city's portion of that bill is going to be about $119,000 for a quarter, which is fantastic. So, so our air service is looking pretty good right now. We will still be obligated to pay that minimum revenue guarantee. So as we're budgeting for that, we are seeking the assistance of our local partners, again, to help us fund that. The city of Riverton has contributed or we're potentially budgeting $200,000 towards air service and we're asking for that from our community partners as well. Does the council have any questions regarding our current financial condition?
Good job. We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. We've all been working through our, our budget process and I'm sure Tony will be talking a little bit more about that in his report. But I just can't even believe that it's time for that already. And I just want to thank the staff and, and the council members that have participated in the process. It's definitely not one person that puts that together. It is a huge group effort on everybody's behalf and thankful for our team here at the city for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate staff ourselves. We're down to reports and comments and since we haven't seen Kyle's face for a while, would you start us off?
It's a pleasure to be out of confinement. And.
Did you get your room cleaned up so you could leave the house?
I left it in a mess. But, Your Honor, living in Riverton and living in Wyoming is really beyond belief. And the service that has been provided us by the police department and the service providers is outstanding. And we, as individuals, should be very proud with our chest stuck out very far for that opportunity. And just the opportunity for us to be here and be healthy and not to have hospitals over full with patients. And we have our share of older individuals, excluding myself, of course, that really, the other states are at a disadvantage. And it's just wonderful that we've got police officers that are willing to take the time to deliver a person's wallet. And like you said, when you lose a wallet, your short life passes before you thinking about instant failure and all of the things you're going to have to undo. And we have service providers like that, not one, but many. And I'm proud to be here, thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Appreciate you back. Rebecca, would you like to go?
Yes, Your Honor. We talked, I talked last time about PAWS and needing fundraising ideas and all the help they can get for this year due to the COVID-19 and not being able to do some of their major fundraisers that they planned to do. So I just want to give a shout out to Mama Diaz. Last week, they did a, they did lunch down there by Federal Auto Recycling and donated 100% of their proceeds to PAWS, which was really awesome. So we want to, just want to say thank you to the community for doing that. This Saturday, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the fairgrounds, the Stock Dock and PAWS are putting together a discounted vaccination clinic. And while they're down there, they're also doing the city licenses. So. So if you have not got your, your dog licensed with the city, go ahead and take them down there Saturday and you can do that as well, get the rabies. And then I think they're doing one other vaccination down there for a discounted price. If you have income below $40,000, you actually get even more of a discount. So if that is the case, bring proof of your income and you can get a better deal on that. Want to say thank you to the community for their kicking trash and picking up the community. As I run through town or walk through town, I see people outside all day, every day fixing up their yards and cleaning out their gutters. And I don't think in the past five years since I've been home, had I, have I seen so many good-looking yards. So I just want to give the whole community a shout out for getting out there and taking care of their, their yards and, and around where they're living at. It's looking really good out there and people helping their neighbors out as well. It's really awesome to see neighbors from across the street running over to the other neighbor, you know, that they know that can't get out and do that kind of stuff. So it's really amazing. And then the Friday night cruise, I just want to remind people with the ordinance that we passed tonight, the excessive acceleration, I see a lot of that on Friday nights. And you can see it, a lot of that on Main Street and Federal with the tire burnouts as you're driving down Main Street. Today, you could still see it. So just make sure you're being mindful of that when you decide to put your foot down on the pedal, that you can be cited for that, so. Well, I got it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Appreciate your help. Councilman Bailey?
Again, I want to echo what Kyle and Rebecca were both saying. You know, when you see what's going on nationwide and that kind of stuff, it really does make you appreciate living here in Riverton and, you know, to see the, all the just amazing things that people are doing to help other people that are in need and taking care of our friends and neighbors and, and that kind of stuff. And then, you know, there's a lot of people that are sort of having to stay home because things are shut down. But we also need to remember, you know, the people that are having to get up and go to work, the police officers and the EMTs and the nurses and doctors and, you know, all the staff that, that do those jobs that we are, you know, really glad they're here doing it when we're in a bind. And, and so, you know, we need to remember those folks and they're, they're working hard and putting in lots of hours and, you know, it's a, it's a. in lots of hours, and, you know, it's a tough time, and they're in a dangerous position sometimes, and so, it's scary out there for them. So, we need to remember those guys and appreciate them very much for what they do. And again, the Friday Night Cruise, again, I don't know what the average miles per hour that we're going up Main Street, but it's pretty darn slow, about ten miles an hour, I think. So, there are a few people that get a little carried away, but, yeah, you got to blow off steam somehow, right?
I'm such a buzzkill.
With some of those vehicles, if you get too excited, you're going to hit the one in front of you.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Tim, are you available?
Yes, I'm here. I guess I have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. First off, the, I'm impressed with, I think, how well, I don't know exactly who's running the Facebook page for the City of Riverton, but I appreciate how much they try to keep people abreast of things. The first thing that's on there that I've been thinking about and want to mention is the need for folks to fill out the 2020 census. There's a lot of funding that's attached to that at the state and the federal level and locally as well, and I think Wyoming is not, I now see on the video that we are showing an empty seat for me. That's great. Anyway, Wyoming has not done the best in terms of the responsiveness to this. It's very easy to fill out the census. It takes a very short amount of time. Our, the City of Riverton Facebook page has a link to it that was from last Thursday. You just click on that, you go in, you put the people that live in your home, that sort of thing. It just is very, very quick. So, I would encourage people to do that. I guess also to follow the City of Riverton Facebook page. It has good information on there. And then, I received in the mail, as I'm sure most everybody did, the notice about the water quality report. That is available online. Rather than sending out a whole big booklet with all the information in it, they just send it out and tell you how to access that. If you do want to have a paper booklet, this is again on the City of Riverton Facebook page, but you can call and you can get one, eight-five-seven-six-eight-nine-one. From reviewing that, and this kind of has to go with what the mayor was saying earlier, we have a lot of really great city employees, people that are working for the city, keeping things running, regardless of the situation around the world, they still go to work every day, and they're working hard. But, you know, the annual water quality report, is your water safe? Yes. And I guess that's, as much as I understand generally of it, but for those that are interested in that, I just remember, I think, last year or the year before, someone had indicated they wished that they had a paper copy of it rather than getting that mailing. I would encourage you, if you want it, to call. You can get ahold of it. They will get a paper copy to you. So, anyway, that's everything I need to mention, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Carla?
I just have to echo what everyone else has said. I'm just so proud to live here and to see how our citizens are just coming together, and I don't want to be a wet blanket, but one thing I'd like to mention is, in the Friday Night Cruise, we see a lot of kids hanging out windows, hanging out sunroofs, sitting in the back of trucks on the side, and I just caution everybody to just be really careful, because we don't want this to end up in a tragic event. So, other than that, that's about all I have.
Thank you. Tony, you thought I'd miss it, but I didn't.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I only have a couple items. As everyone has talked about, we've continued to provide service here at City Hall, but City Hall has been, we have locked, we had locked the doors up until this last Monday. City staff has done a great job of making sure that we can open the City Hall offices. Obviously, we shut down some of the hallway here, but all of the places that individuals can go to get service through the windows, so utility billing and the court, and they can even go to the, right in the right entryway for the Police Department to access. Some of those services are coming back, and we put that out on our Facebook page and let folks know about it. And I would just like to thank all of staff for continuing to provide service throughout this time. They did a great job of, we shut down on a Monday morning and said, you know, we're going to shut City Hall based on the recommendations, and council talked about this. But, staff took, not only had already done a great job of making sure that we could provide the services, but also found new ways to do it, and we're continuing to do it. So, we encourage people to take advantage of those if they're convenient. But we are here to serve, and our staff has served very well, and I'm very appreciative of every one of them. So, we, I mean, the door, but the doors here are open. We encourage people, if they need special consideration, to call ahead. Please give us that heads up as we work through this, and we appreciate their patience through this, all of our citizens, and their willingness to interact with us differently over time, and we look forward to moving ahead. The other item, sorry, make sure I got them all. The other item is, I'll end on the, I'll end on the really good note. But the, so the second item is, we currently have a budget presentation scheduled for the 12th, which is a work session. It would be our intent to modify that and budget books out on the, I want to make sure I get this date right, the 15th via email, which is, you know, generally how we would do it anyway. We can get hard copies for everybody if you need it as well, and then have a, the budget presentation on the 19th. So, we have, it's about, is about another week. And then, you'll have about three weeks with the budget in case there's anything. It just takes some time to get through. And of course, we're here to make sure that everybody has the ability to ask questions in advance, and then we would, of course, adopt in June. If that's amenable to everybody, we wouldn't have a work session next week. And we do recommend that schedule. It would seem, it would seem to work out just a little bit better and be more efficient on our time. If that's okay, then we'll move ahead that way. So, there won't be a work session next week, but we will get you those documents, and we encourage any questions that you have. It's going to be a big discussion this year, as Mia talked about. It's, we're trying to figure out what it might look like, and we do that a year in advance. So, we can expect a little more challenges this year, but we appreciate the work that everybody has done, and this team has put together, has a really good understanding of where, why things are estimated the way they are and why we're planning things the way we are. But we also know that we may have to pivot a little bit at different times in different ways. We expect that. This year's going to be different. Guess we're going to learn something. But with that, we'll move it, we'll move it to the 19th, and we appreciate that. And the final item that we have is, that we did receive an offer on airport property, on one of the airport properties. As it is an economic development, it's a business, and it falls under Economic Development Statute, that we do not have to accept, we do not have to accept bids. It would be our intention, we'll move that forward the same way we've dealt with the Brown Sugar property, and advertise it for the three weeks per statute, but wouldn't accept bids. And we feel this is appropriate largely because the, it's been for sale for a very long time, and we've had it listed at a different price now for a few months. So, it's not as if folks didn't have the opportunity to take a look at it. So, we feel that, you know, we've done that due diligence, and so, we're going to meet our state statute requirements. So, what you will see is, in June, that probably comes to us, comes to council for an approval on a sale, and that's, and that's a positive thing. That's business development, and we're looking forward to working through that process. So, that's about all I have. Again, thank you to everybody in council for all the good work throughout this process, and we look forward to bringing that to you. I have nothing else, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is everybody acceptable to no work session next week? Tim, you okay with that?
Sounds fine to me.
Super. That's a go. Thanks, Tony. Appreciate it. I got kind of a long list tonight, and so, everybody get comfortable. I have some praise to pass out. The first item that happened after our last council meeting was I got a late call from Councilman Becker, Commissioner Becker, about our transient population. Actually, there were two phone calls. I really do appreciate his efforts, and I would like to thank him publicly for his conversations. I immediately called the chief, and chief took that by the horns, and miraculously, he met with them early in the morning and asked them if they wouldn't just start making their way down to the, to the fairgrounds where the county sheriff was set up to test and to hold them until we could transport them to a location. I also had two conversations with Dr. Gee that evening, and, or Dr. G, excuse me, Dr. G, and was pleased with what he had suggested. And then also, Tony was on that phone call, and I appreciated all those individuals that assisted at that time and made that. Everybody the next morning was somewhat surprised at how well you handled that, chief.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. FTAG, which is a, is a meeting of, it's Association of Governments in Fremont County, so it's all the mayors and all the commissioners have a seat in that. We met, and that meeting usually takes about three hours to four hours, and it's extremely helpful for us to be able to do that. And so, I would like to pass out my appreciation for the other mayors in the county for the work that they've done, and the FTAG director, they are very successful in what they do. Of course, it was a Zoom meeting, which none of us are fond of, and so, hopefully, some of those will come to an end. I also had a meeting the following day with Mia and Tony over the budget, and I would like to pass out compliments to both of them and to city staff about how well and how competently they handle those funds and how knowledgeable they are in those. You can ask some pretty tough questions, and they've got the answers before, before you know it. And so, I do appreciate their efforts. The Wyoming Visitors Council is struggling with where to put funds, and once again, it appears that Riverton became the cash cow for that operation. And so, I had a long meeting with Mayor Anderson and Ryan and tried to impress upon them that we were tired of being the cash cow, and it didn't seem to help a lot. We're still the cash cow, so. They will be presenting an amendment or a budget for that, those funds, and those are funds that are generated by tourist dollars in our community, and so, that will be coming our way. I also got an unusual early morning call from Senator Bebaut at seven-thirty in the morning, and I appreciated that call, and I realized that he's out of state, and I appreciate him being so knowledgeable and willing to participate in the conversations that we have. That conversation went on for forty-five minutes or so, and it was mostly on reopening of Riverton. The reopening of the county has been a subject of mine for three weeks or better. I don't get a lot of traction on that, but I did appreciate his assistance on that, and I, I'm grateful for it. On the, on the 29th, we had our last call with the Fremont County Emergency Committee, and we haven't had one since then, and so, the numbers have stayed fairly consistent. And what I would like to point out, we do have a rising number of cases, but our hospitalization is way down. I was fortunate enough to have a meeting with the CEO of Sage West, and these are unusual meetings. He called me and wanted an early morning meeting on Saturday at seven in the morning, and that meeting went for two hours, and we got right down to the brass tacks of things. And there's plenty of beds, plenty of ICU space, and he's working really hard to make sure that those hospitals function correctly and well, and so, I appreciated those numbers. Sometimes, numbers are deceiving, and we get a little bit concerned with the numbers that get bounced around, and our hospitals are in good shape, and we're not overrun them. And what we, what we've done in the process, we've managed to keep the highest count of beds in the ICUs, got as high as eleven, and they've dropped now down to four. And I think if I have the count correctly, last report was one in Riverton and three in Lander. The very last day, on the 29th, we did get numbers that we'd been asking for, and they were numbers per area. And I was a little bit surprised, I don't know why, because I was thinking that we were doing a better job. I was a little surprised, Lander had twenty-seven, most of the reservation had single digits. They were, these are all positive, known positives, and Riverton had forty-two known positives. And so, that's also good news and doesn't have that much bad news when we consider that we're the larger population and we have ten, twenty to eleven thousand people, and so, the numbers are still holding in that three percent to four percent area. A little bit of positive information, when the One Sent and Half Sent Committee went around town, I picked up some interviews that were asked that I would go handle, and I, and I did that by the people that went out and asked questions, and I got the opportunity to talk this last week with Jim Gore for a couple hours, Gary Hadley for a couple hours, and I also got the opportunity to take a tour of the sewage plant. Now, I would suggest, years ago, when I was on the council, we took that tour, and I would suggest that maybe as a council, we go do that again. Very, very impressive facility, but it's getting old. It's twenty-eight years old, and it has some things that need to be replaced, and Kyle and Brendan and Tony are fully aware of the mechanical things that we have going there. We could have as much as, if we had all the money in the world, we could probably fix eight-hundred thousand dollars worth of things without blinking an eye, and yet, we don't have that kind of money. But we have great staff again, that is taking a really good job of what we do have and keeping it working, and so, that tour was, was very informative. And Mr. Dale does a, does a great job out, down there, and he's got an excellent staff. It's amazing when you understand that we put back in the river about thirty-six inch pipe of water twenty-four hours a day that comes through that plant. And so, they're pretty, pretty amazing stats. Along with that, I got to sit in with another meeting with Tony, and we got to talk to our representatives from the Senate and the House just for our district. And we were, our conversation was designed to speak to the CARES money, the one-point-two-five billion dollars that's going to come to the state of Wyoming. That was not a good conversation, and maybe we don't get as much money as we think we would get. So, let's keep our fingers crossed, and every time you talk, talk to one of those representatives, encourage them and give them strength to go do what they need to do. That's hard work, and very possibly, the governor will divide that money up instead of using the legislature to do it. The Friday night drag, you know, I graduated in seventy-four, which was a few years ago, but the, our big fun thing to do was drag Maine, and we drug a lot of Maine. And so, it was, we never drugged Maine with that much traffic, though. And I hit Main Street at seven-fifteen, and I didn't make Federal until close to eight. And we had the biggest tractors you've ever seen before with tracks and blue tractors and green tractors and school buses. I think we had three or four full school buses full of seniors, students off of the reservation. We had every flag that you could imagine going up and down Maine. you could imagine going up and down, uh, Maine. Um, we just, we just had a lot of fun. And, uh, I tried to pull into the, the Java Java where I was asked to go, but I couldn't get in. There was so much traffic that I just gave up. And then Judy Bowler called me and kinda scolded me of where was I was supposed to, I was supposed to go there and, and meet John Dilde. Um, John Dilde and I, John graduated a year before I did, and we played on the same basketball teams. And so, um, I did wanna see John. And, uh, what an amazing story. For those of you that tuned in and listened to that, uh, um, interview with John Gabrielson, um, John Dilde has had a, a lot of tragedy in his life and has been willing and, and took the opportunity to turn that tragedy into, to great things. He's lost two wives. Um, his latest ailment, he was in Bora Bora and came down with a, an illness that no one, no one knew how to, what it was. And interesting, he said that in the morning, the doctor treated animals. In the afternoon, they treat, they treat people. And so they had to sterilize the, the facility between the animals and the people.
Protect the animals.
Yeah, probably to protect the animals. And so, um, he was really glad to get back to the States. But that, that, uh, illness that he had paralyzed him for four and a half months. And it was such a paralyzing situation that he couldn't close his eyelids. And they would have to tape them shut at night. And, um, so he just laid there for four and a half months. And that's where he got the vision to do good things with the rest of the time that he had to do, had to have on this, this earth. And so, uh, $10,000 donation might not go very far, but it's pretty amazing that, um, high school graduate from Riverton High School was willing to bring that up and, and donate that to the restaurants in Riverton. With that, Judy Bowler hit the streets, and this is a girl that can get things done. Uh, kinda like, uh, the two girls we have on our council that can make things happen. And, um, she collected another $7,500 in conjunction with the $10,000. And she called me Saturday morning wanting to know why I didn't make it to shake hands with John. And I did my best apology. And I even had funds that I wanted to, to get in the mix. And, um, she was already out at 10 o'clock in the morning, Saturday, passing out the funds to the restaurants. The, the money wasn't 24 hours old. And she managed to, to get that money out into the hands of those restaurants. And so I, I would like to commend her for her effort and all of those that helped her. She had, she'll be the first one to tell how many people she had. So today, Tony and I were invited to go up and, and take some pictures with Mr. Dilde and, and the veterans, Veterans Hall sold tickets and, and everybody got involved. And that's the beauty of living in Riverton. We really do. And, and John pointed, pointed that out in his interview, how you couldn't do this in, in Colorado where he lives now, that it just wouldn't work. And so we are, you know, lots of times we get, we get complacent that we live in such a small little place. But, um, he wishes that that's where he, um, lived. And so it's nice to have him recognize that and, um, bring those things to us. Um, Riverton is a special spot. And, um, and we, we are real, really the benefactors. Kyle?
Just one thing, Your Honor. Uh, I, my mind's not as good as it used to be. It never was any good. Um, I, on my, paying my utilities, I had, uh, several to call in. And, uh, so I called in, and she said, oh, no, you don't have to do that. I'll look them up. I'll look up all your water bills, and, uh, then I'll call you back. So then she called me back, and there was a total, it was, you know, just like it always is. And I was able to pay my water bill and all of that stuff over the phone with a credit card and be done with it. Now, you tell me you're gonna do that in New York?
No.
Or Nebraska or anywhere else. It's just the people here. I always, I, I came here by accident in 85. Let me tell you, I wouldn't leave this place for anything.
That, that is, and I probably wasn't an accident. We're glad to have you. So, um, the other thing that's been running hot and heavy this week is budget meetings. And then every time you turn around, there's another budget meeting. And I got to the one today, half hour late, but it was nice to see all the departments' heads sharpening their pencils. And ladies and gentlemen, we really are going to take a severe hit with sales tax in, in our budget. And so the services, we've managed to think we've got them covered. Um, Mayor Warpness, one of the mayors that preceded me, was successful in having us put a 18.5, um, reserve cap in our budget. That is not a savings account. That is just that we don't spend 18.5% of the, the revenue that we estimate that we have. That's assuming that we get all that, all that revenue also. But it is a good thing to do, and it has saved us from time to time. And we will probably have to dip into some reserves this year to make things happen. And so, um, I do appreciate the, the really good effort that happens in all those rooms I go in. Um, early today, I took Kyle Butterfield, and we went to Ray Bowler's. And we're doing, we're commencing work on, on Summit. And there's two seasons in Wyoming. There's winter and road construction. And so we're into road construction. And, uh, I told Ray, when he asked me that we weren't gonna fix anything on Monroe, that we were just gonna fix Summit. And he said, no, you're wrong about that. And I, I've been married for so long, I realize I probably was. And so, um, I grabbed Kyle and we went down. And, and Kyle pointed out that yes, we are gonna fix the frost heave that occurs in his road there on, on, uh, Monroe. And that is in, already is in the works and in the bid. And that's how good, that's how good our guys do. They look forward and they, they see the problems as we get close to them. Um, that's almost a full block away, isn't it, Kyle?
Yeah.
From the construction. And yet Kyle and his team saw that and saw the need for it. And, and we're gonna get that taken care of. Now, for the real exciting news, I got a phone call this afternoon off of my phone in my office. And I, I called it back and got an answering machine, and I left my phone number. And around 4:30 today, I got a call from ConocoPhillips. And ConocoPhillips has worked out a deal with Dr. G, and they're bringing back their workforce for Train 3 and, and Train 2. And they're gonna be here Monday. And, uh, with a workforce of about 150 people. And so they will have to be quarantined for a period of time until their tests come back in and, uh, we make sure that they're negative. But, um, work is gonna commence in full out at, uh, ConocoPhillips. And, uh, they're gonna take care of laundry services and motels and catering and everything for that, for those employees until they get off quarantine and, and then after that. So, um, we need to look forward to the opening of Riverton. And I, I realize that there's people that don't want to do that. And, uh, we have people at risk, and I would encourage those people at risk to take special care of themselves and to not come out if they don't need to, uh, they don't have to. Um, our, our health is one of the things you cannot buy. And so, um, make sure you take good care of your own health and pay attention to your health, and we would encourage that. With that said, though, we have an economy that, that, um, requires everybody. I was in a really interesting conversation today about restaurants. And it's amazing how one thing leads to the next. You could buy a whole case of lettuce for a dollar because they had a surplus of lettuce. And, um, and so it's sometimes things that we don't understand that, that we think we understand and, and we don't. And so, um, I encourage everybody to do your very best to support. And I, I think we do. I mean, we really have, as a citizen, a group of citizens, we've done a wonderful job of supporting as, as far as the government will let us. And I think, um, the government needs to realize that we have a constitutional avenue that allows us to be free and, and, uh, mobile. And, uh, it will be my effort to, to get that message across and, and make that, uh, work to the fullest extent of, of the citizens of Riverton. So, um, my iPad went black, so I must be done. Um, I, I know that that was a long rant, but I, I, I give you that information because a lot of things are happening. We are working extremely hard to make sure that the city of Riverton is taken care of. And, um, and we appreciate the staff. It's, it starts with staff. Our building's been closed. Our custodial staff's been exceptional. Uh, Kristen has gone out of her way to make sure that that happens. Um, everything's been sanitized. Our court has been shut down for six weeks or seven weeks? Six weeks? And so that is gonna be a difficult thing to start back up. And we will have to pay special attention to how that comes back up and what we have to do to make that work. Our police department has been exceptional through this. And, um, I just would like to commend the chief for his efforts. And, and it's impressive that you have the ability to go out and talk with people and get them to do what you'd like them to do.
Thank you.
That wouldn't happen in New York either. And so thank you for your ability. And with that said, I preach, I really appreciate city staff. Tony is always willing to go and, uh, where I ask him to, and so are the rest of you. And so Kyle was a lot of help today. When I said you couldn't, you did it. So, thank you very much. With that said, we also have, uh, everybody on the diast has a signature card from the people on Gannett expressing their appreciation for us moving their project forward. And we do appreciate, uh, all the effort that's gone into that. Some of those meetings and discussions were over the fact that, uh, we're saving too much money doing that in-house, and we should send that money out of house. And, and so the more money we keep in the pot, the more asphalt we lay. And so, um, sometimes we have to have that, those conversations. I would encourage you, this year is an election year, and, and, um, I would encourage you to get familiar with the, the way the one cent money was spent. And when, when that conversation comes up, to, to do your very best to defend that side of the, Councilman Bailey sits on that. We did have, uh, three members come and talk to us last time, but I counted up the kidding committee, and there's six others that didn't. And so more than the majority agreed with our policy. So, um, with all that said, does anybody else have anything to add? Staff, you all right? Megan put graffiti on the floor of the City Hall, and she'll be receiving a fine shortly. Other than that, it's pretty good-looking graffiti.
Well, Tony, it's really hard to jump between them spots.
Pretty far apart for us older guys. But other than that, anybody else have anything?
No, Your Honor.
With that said, uh, with, if there isn't any objections, we stand adjourned at, uh, 8:35.